02:00 PM on Monday, January 22nd. Do you want to record?
It is recorded.
It is. All right. So I will call to order this meeting of the Lancaster Select Board. Reminder, it is being recorded and broadcast. Thanks to our friend, Starling Lancaster Community Television. And I will start with a roll call. Mr. Allison.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Carrigan is here. Before we begin our meeting, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of a great Lancastrian who served on this board not that long ago, and in many other capacities in town, in his 40-plus years of calling Lancaster home, Jay Moody, who passed away last week. Our thoughts are with his wife Joyce and his family. They also had just recently, prior to that, lost their daughter. And so we know the words were an offer. We'll do little to relieve the pain that Joyce and her family are suffering, but didn't want to let a moment go by in a public meeting without acknowledging the great work that Jay did for the town, his commitment to this town. We didn't agree on every issue, but we agreed that we both loved Lancaster a lot, and that we always wanted what was best for the community. And he was active up until the end on our Government Study Committee and with the Council on Aging and many other things. There was always, I always knew there was something to put on those digital signs because Jay would tell me there was something to put on those digital signs. He was, he truly was, was a fantastic public servant here in Lancaster and throughout his entire life, so. And I know my colleagues, well, I don't know if my colleagues would like to say anything, but.
Yes?
Like you, Steve, I wanted to thank Pete and join, I'm sure residents would like to join us, and our thanks to the Moody family for sharing Jay so much. I don't think that there was a meeting that I zoomed into that I didn't see his name there. He was also like you. We agreed and disagreed, but he was one of those rare gentlemen that you could do so with respect, and he was what we like to call fact-based, although he should have understood my facts better. But we, he was also a really interesting man, and people don't realize some of the things he did for Lancaster, including making geocaching trails on the Cook Conservation Area and helping growing raspberries and giving them to, taking them to seniors who didn't have fresh fruit. I mean, he was truly, somebody described him as an onion because they didn't realize they kept on peeling back and they'd find another interesting layer. I wanted to go drink beers in Croatia with him, which was one of his favorite things to do, but we didn't get the opportunity. We'll have the opportunity, according to his wife, to celebrate his life, his wife Joyce, in March, hopefully. So we'll see how things come together on that, and I'm sure we'll keep everybody informed.
Yes.
Yeah, for me, honestly, it hasn't really sunk in yet. Jay was an inspiration to me. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for him. He walked with me to get my first set of signatures, to be a Select Board member. You know, every step of the way, the process, and was not, did not hesitate to tell me when I was making a mistake, which was probably more frequent than it needed to be. So yeah, I'm just, I don't think it's set in yet. He was everywhere, anywhere, all the time, and I don't know what it's gonna, Lancaster's not gonna be the same. Thank you.
So with that, I just ask that we take a minute and pause for Jay. All right. As he would likely do if he were here, he would want us to get on with the meeting and the work at hand, so we shall do that. First item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. We have two sets. One, that I can't remember why we tabled them on November 20th, but I know there was a reason, and there's one from November 20th that was tabled and one from January 8th.
Yeah, so the one that is the tabled one we have in draft format?
Right.
And I think we're waiting for a couple of things to finish up before we finalize those, but I would make a motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 minutes.
I knew there was a reason. Is there a second?
Um, second.
Okay. Discussion on the January 8th, 2024 minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Steve. Okay.
So Jason, I gather we'd like to table the November 20th till we see to have the information.
Yes.
Do we need to do that since it appears on the agenda? Do we need to vote that?
Vote to table or just, if we don't take action, it's table de facto. All right. We have no scheduled appearances in public hearings, so that one quickly. Public comment. I want to point out to folks who have been studious and looked at Section 5 of the agenda, particularly Article, or Number 4, that we will be discussing the Hawthorne Lane development next, well, almost next in our agenda. So if folks have comments specific to that, and that, that part of the agenda will be about us hearing, getting update from Kate to the extent that we have one, hearing a lot of things, compiling them, going out and getting answers, and then bringing those answers back in February. So I would just say if you want to make a comment or have a question about Hawthorne Lane, you can do it in public comment, but you don't have to. You can wait until we do that because we will take public comment during Hawthorne Lane development, about the Hawthorne Lane development. Be very clear, if you have any other public comment, now's your time. If it's about Hawthorne Lane, you can either do it now or reserve it for a later period of time. So with that, as is our custom, we go in the room first. So if you'd like, start making your way to the podium. Anybody in the room who would like to, and then if you are online and would like to make comments, put your digital hand up. The Supreme Judicial Court says I can't tell you what to say or how to say it, but also says I can tell you whether you could say it or for how long. So you get two minutes. I will raise my hand when you have one minute to go, and then we will, we will end your comment in two minutes. So name and address, please. First, Ralph.
Ralph Diford, 861 George Hill Road. Three topics in two minutes. First, I want to add my comments to the comments from the Select Board tonight to honor Jay Moody's devotion, commitment, and service to Lancaster. I personally appreciate the time he took to encourage me to become involved. He was a thoughtful guy who will be greatly missed. Second, I'm inviting all of you, everyone who can hear my voice, to attend the Second Annual Black History Month Concert on February 17 at the College Church. In addition to the concert, it includes an art show and free refreshments, free food. The art show opens at 5:30. The concert begins at 6:00 PM. It was phenomenal last year, and we expect no less this year. February 17, mark your calendars. Lastly, Hawthorne Lane, and I am going to speak about it briefly because my, I'm going to go a slightly different direction with this. I believe the Hawthorne Lane situation highlights a core governance issue. The planning board established the conditions. The Select Board was responsible for enforcing the conditions. Whenever one board is responsible for enforcing conditions established by another board, there is potential for problems. I encourage the Select Board to put in place systems that will ensure the collaboration and support required for success when multiple boards must work together to ensure success. The Hawthorne Lane project was a relatively small project.
That's right.
But you get to come back.
But you get to come back. Exactly. Once we take that.
Five more seconds.
Okay. Don't see anybody up there. Anybody in here? Public comment is closed. Oh, yes?
I was gonna finish mine. Five seconds.
He raised his hand.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Maybe, maybe ten, but.
That's.
I was just going to say that the Hawthorne Lane is a relatively small project. We have some very large projects, and it's really important we work out these governance issues. If this is something that the Select Board chooses to refer to our Governance Committee, great. And if not, I would be happy to volunteer in any way that I could be helpful to work on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you rather address that?
Yeah.
No. All right. Fantastic. Now it's closed again. All right. Administration, Budget, and Policy. Economic Development Committee is sponsored by, the next two items are sponsored by Ms. Turner's, Economic Development and Public Records Requests.
Thank you, Chairman Carrigan.
Thank you.
Steve, I did ask to on-table perhaps both, but.
Oh, I thought you just, that was when you worked up here.
But this one, no, 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 but I can speak quickly to the economic development. It's pretty simple. In summary, many of us remember a town meeting in 2022, the town meeting passed a bylaw that said that the town should establish an Economic Development Committee. That was Article 9, and it was sponsored by us. And it is, I admittedly, a bit vague. I don't think we all remember that, at least I don't remember everything that far back, but it called for a five-member board appointed by us with a selectman or appointee as present and as an advisory committee to work collaboratively with the town's planning director, let's see, and businesses to promote responsible businesses and residential development in Lancaster. The committee shall also carry out any other tasks delegated to it by the Select Board or as required by the town's general zoning bylaws. So the reason that I brought this up now is because people, first, we voted it, and I think that we need to, to do, to do this.
So what year did you say it was on the, on May 1?
May 2022.
I know, I don't think.
Well, we can look it up, but that's what my records say.
Because there was an existing one when I joined the board in May.
Yes. So what happened is that we had an ad hoc committee that was existing that we disbanded, but that shortly before that, we had approved a, a pro-business, and I stand to be corrected, but that's, that's what my records show. So anyway, the reason that I bring this up is for a couple of reasons. Things fall through the cracks, but I think that a town meeting, which is our legislature, votes something that we need to follow the will of the people. The second reason is, I'm very, I'm, I'm pro-business, as I know we are, and the reason that I think that the people voted overwhelmingly to establish an EDC was multifactorial, but for one, for tax relief. I'm not delusional that an EDC could solve all our problems, but, and the second is for quality of life, to support the businesses, the small businesses that we have existing. In fact, in this last week, I've spoken to small business owners that could really use some help expanding their business and networking and working with the resources that the town can offer. Local jobs are sought after, and they keep money within our community. So I think it, there's solid reason to honor this vote and to establish the EDC. I realize that we disbanded the last committee. It tended to be focused on, I believe it's Article 9, if you're looking. I think that the reason that the last one was demanded in part was people saying because it was focused solely on a large business. They spent a lot of time talking about the proposal, and that went to the people's vote, and we know where that, you know, that's running through the mill right now. I do want to caution people that I don't expect that this committee will be able to significantly impact our tax bills that people have received, and some people have called me to, with their, expressing their concerns. People talk about things like, well, if we had had Walmart, and I saw the financial analysis I looked at and dissected that based on the valuation that Lemonster has for the Walmart that had been talked about for here, that would only bring us $150,000 a year revenue, so it wouldn't solve all our problems. And I don't expect an EDC would. So my ask to my fellow board members is that we honor the vote, and we establish a call for volunteers, bring people in, and then have a, and to have a discussion about our goals and resources. And if you prefer, and it might be prudent to have a discussion about what we expect and the calls and the resources and benchmarks prior to putting out the call for volunteers, but I'd like to do this as expeditiously as we could to help the people who.
Sure. So as I recall, thank you for jogging my memory. That was my first month I was voted in, the week before I was elected. But I recall several months in a row where we petitioned citizens to apply to be on the EDC, and we'd received, I believe, a grand total of zero citizens applying to be on it because we never interviewed anybody. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't call for it again, but it was months in a row, and I'll go back and look at the minutes to see how many times we had it listed. But we talked about it month after month after month at meetings because it was right when I became chair. And we received no response from the citizens, and so frankly, the effort to populate the other committees that people were interested in took, took precedence. So I know that the citizens voted in at a town meeting, but no citizens at the time when we were populating the committee stood up to popular. So I'm glad to reexamine it and make a new push for it, absolutely, but I want the record reflected was not due to a lack of responsiveness to town meeting. It just was frankly, no disrespect to any citizen, it was just due to a lack of volunteer interest.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not yet to cast any aspersions or blame or why this didn't get done. Things just happened.
Your comment just was that we should honor the vote, which we have honored the vote.
Yeah, well, we definitely should.
Well, we have, I just wanted to be very clear to the citizens.
Okay, that's good.
We have honored the vote. We just, no one has stepped up to volunteer.
So I think, just given, you know, it was spurred by a couple of things. I, I went to Mass Municipal Association, and I went through some seminars, talked about this. I don't, it's not on the agenda, so I won't talk about them, but perhaps when we meet at, hopefully soon, to talk about our goals and what we expect of a committee like this, that would be, that would be great.
I mean, if you have thoughts on what you expect in a, hold on two seconds. If you have thoughts, you're certainly welcome to share them, and I'm glad to, we're glad to petition volunteers to volunteer again. Yes?
Yeah, I don't think any of this is necessary. So we have two documents that already define our goals. It's the Town Master Plan and the Economic Development Plan, and they're already there. We don't need to talk about anything. And, and the number one goal of both of those documents is the North Lancaster Corridor. And as an individual Select Board member, I'm very grateful that the town passed that, that objective. That's number one, and we need to continue to work down those plans. So I'm of the opinion that if we just focus on the goals that are already laid out, don't try to invent goals that we think are good, you know, I think we'll be in a much better spot.
I'm all for that. I was merely saying if we could come up with recruiting goals, forgetting volunteers, but again, in the two years since, no one has petitioned the board for an appointment. We will remind folks right now.
Yeah.
And many other times that we have an Economic Development Committee. As Jason pointed out, the goals for Economic Development are clear in both our Master Plan and our Economic Development Plan. We look forward to getting so many volunteers submitting their letters that it takes us time to read through them, but we are yet to receive those.
Oh, yeah. Based on the fact that I myself had, yeah, I always sat at the table and you were, you know, you were there, Steve. With all that had been going on, I fell through the cracks. I think this, we should try to talk about.
I just wanted to be very clear to not fall through the cracks.
I know you said recruited, and I don't remember, to be honest with you, what we did to recruit.
It's 1622, actually. You were. Well. I'm just, there was a number of public comments of people that had served on the Economic Development Committee and felt like the charge was too broad. And so there was an idea of before you start recruiting people, if you could narrow down the broad goal and have more pointed goals and objectives. And actually, George France and Rob Zidak both spoke to that, and it looks like, Alex, you were in favor and said that you were one of the people that was pushing for the town, it to be on town meeting prior and would be working on that, so.
That's great. Yeah, and that's, I think that's probably about the time that we disbanded the other committee. I don't know. The ad hoc, it doesn't matter, it's just what.
The other one must have been disbanded before because it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't here when I started.
Okay.
The history on it is when we voted at town meeting to have it changed and be a formal committee, and it went from seven to five, we're forced to disband it. So it got disbanded, period, because of.
Oh, because of.
The ad hoc to a standard. Yes, and it went from seven to five.
Got you.
So anyway, we have a law that says we need to do it, and let's look at the policy. It may be exactly the goals that Jason read, that's fine. Just talk about it and try to recruit more actively. Again.
Great.
Again.
Public record request.
So are we, because we're the ones that do the recruiting, are you going to revise the, the charge or just advertise it with the charge?
I think we should have a discussion because if it's, it could be just a discussion.
My recommendation is if you have revisions to the charge, you bring them, do you ask for the item to be added to the agenda, you bring those revisions to the charge to the packet so we can review them.
Okay.
And then we can vote yea or nay. But there are, there is a charge. With said charge, there were no volunteers. We sit here today without a committee.
Okay.
Public record request.
That's the one I had asked for to be, to be tabled if I could. It's, there's nothing urgent there. No, no bylaw, nothing we passed. So I'll, and I talked to you earlier about that.
Right, you asked, but you said that was because you were likely going to be zooming into the meeting, so.
Right, and so I just scooted in here, so I would, and I would like to table it.
So do you want it tabled to the, because I just want citizens to read the agenda and expect conversation.
Could I, could I table that indefinitely?
Is it to the next meeting?
Definitely. I will table that definitely, and I will ask you.
So we'll remove it from the agenda. If you wish to add it back.
Yes.
Add it back.
Thank you.
Okay. Government Study Committee update. Emily Taylor. The floor is yours.
Can I see my address?
Yes.
All right. Emily Taylor, 634 Main Street, and I'm speaking tonight as the Chair of the Government Study Before we get into our discussion, I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge a great loss to our committee, but more importantly, our community. Jay Moody was instrumental in keeping this committee going. His attention and energy to the purpose of the committee was unwavering even in the face of immense personal tragedy. It's difficult to present this report knowing that Jay should have been here, thoughtfully observing the conversation and bringing his long perspective of Lancaster municipal government. We grieve the loss of Jay as a stalwart member of the community in all its spheres and send our love, support, and gratitude to his family. All right, so I guess I'd like to ask you a bit how much of a presentation you would like versus how much you want to jump into the questions because I can tailor what I have prepared to accommodate that.
I mean, I think give the presentation.
Okay.
And if we jump in, we apologize, but we'll try not to.
Okay.
We'll attempt to hold our questions.
Okay, yes.
To the end.
Okay, great. So the Government Study Committee was voted into being at the May 2022 in a town meeting. The original timeline was to deliver a report of recommendations to the Select Board in, for February 2023. For myriad reasons, people being busy, et cetera, it, that didn't happen, and we've been given permission to submit it now, and I am grateful for that opportunity. So to assess, to, to assess the pain points that people saw in municipal government, we and Mr. Carrigan was on the committee this time, and TA Hodges was the staff liaison. A survey was available to residents via an online system, which was Survey Monkey, and paper copies were available in the library and town hall, both of which are fully ADA accessible and open to the public regularly. We received 272 online responses and 17 paper responses. That is statistically significant, which I know is Steve's. All right. To frame our analysis of the data gathered, we asked the key question. So once we had gathered our data, we said, okay, how do we analyze this? We said, which issues raised are the result of structural barriers to optimization in Lancaster's town government? That is to say, where are the rubs that impede staff, elected, appointed committees, and residents in their efforts to work and govern in Lancaster in an effective, efficient, and satisfactory way? Importantly, we looked very carefully at which were within the scope of the Government Study Committee. Our mandate was not to govern. It is not to govern. It is to summarize the state of Lancaster's town government based on feedback from the residents, highlight areas for improvement, and offer a non-binding report of the way that these areas could be addressed. Through the survey, informal conversations, and observations, we narrowed down the many issues that were identified to four specific pain points. I will be presenting three of those tonight. We had divided them between committee members, and Jay was in charge of one, and we won't be presenting that one, which I actually think is okay because I think that one, while really important, it was ways to improve communications from town to citizens, I think is actually, will be captured in another one of our recommendations. So focus area one, and our recommendation is the development of a standing Government Study Committee. There's precedence for this in Ipswich. They've actually had one since 1962, I believe. So Lancaster, like all towns, is constantly evolving. The data gathered represents a snapshot in time. It was like 30 days, I think, that the survey was up, which is not, you know, bad, it just, it's a limited, you know, perspective. Through our work as a committee, we have a renewed understanding of how the evolution of Lancaster will continuously demand a critical review of our town government so that it meets the needs of Lancaster. So our recommendation is, the committee recommends the development of a standing Government Study Committee with the support of the town administrator. The committee believes that a standing Government Study Committee is a critical component to fostering a culture of continual improvement in Lancaster's municipal government. The benefits of a standing committee, a standing Government Study Committee would allow Lancaster to continuously identify areas of opportunity rather than periodically reviewing the whole of town government. It would provide a forum for issues of town governance to be thoroughly examined on a regular basis, and this ongoing thorough examination of discrete topics would allow the level of detail and depth of analysis of something as complex and consequential as a town government deserves. Ralph, actually, you mentioned, you know, coordination between boards. That's one of the things, we have a list of things that the standing committee could focus on, and one of them was ways to decrease how, the siloed nature of boards, potentially, you know, twice yearly meeting of the chairs of all boards. Here, here's our focus, here's what we're doing, here's where we may need, you know, your advice or input, sort of a team meeting to, you know, level set and coordinate across those boards. It would be able to triage issues, and it would be able to recruit members with relevant experience. We could have a big list of issues. We could vote on them by like level of importance at annual town meeting, for instance, and then say, you know, there was one about finances of boards, you know, financial reports of boards. That year, the standing committee recruits someone with finance experience. The next year, if we're doing something different, we recruit a different set of people so that we really get experts in the room, and we have them for a specific amount of time on a bounded topic, and they can serve and then say, thank you, I'm done. All right. The second recommendation is to put before the annual town meeting a vote on beginning the process of expanding the Select Board. The Select Board is currently made up of three members. Communities with the Select Board Town Meeting Forum of Government have the ability to elect a three, five, or seven-member board. What do you believe is the most advantageous number of Select Board members for Lancaster? That was the survey question. The available responses were three members, five members, or seven members. I don't have enough information to make a recommendation, and I do not have a preference on the number of members. 242 people responded to this question from a total of, I should update that. I don't think, I don't think my total of 259 here includes the paper responses, so I'll update that. So 18% of people indicated that three is the most advantageous number of members. 51% of people who responded to this question indicated that the most advantageous number of Select Board members for Lancaster is five. 7%. Only. 7%, almost 8% of people indicated that the most advantageous number of Select Board members for Lancaster is seven. 18% of people said they did not have enough information, and 6% of people did not have an opinion. So, what's noteworthy here is that 59% of people who responded to this question thought that the Select Board should be at least five. Oops, sorry. Apologies. What's really important to note about this, and I want to be really, really clear in my language about this, is that our committee is not and should not recommend how big the Select Board should be. We, I've been really, since I became Chair in October, really, really hammered in the purpose, and our scope should be data-driven. We, you know, based on the size of our committee, based on how much time we had once we were reinvigorated, it's out of our scope to recommend a certain number of people, and that is not what we're doing. What we are doing is recommending that at annual town meeting, a proposal for beginning the process to expand the Select Board should be put in front of people to vote on. People can vote yes, people can vote no, in between now and then, people can advocate for, yes, we should continue, we should expand, no, we shouldn't, we should stick with three. But the point is, our data clearly shows an appetite for discussing this, and given our form of government, it is, I think it would be a disservice to not allow people to vote on this. So our form of government derives its strength from a direct voting process, available to all residents. You know, it's not unique in Massachusetts, but it's unique in our country. And executive action to not include these recommendations on the warrant would be, in my opinion, inconsistent with the way Lancaster has set up its form of government. Lancaster elders are smart. Let them weigh their recommendations themselves via an official vote at annual town meeting. So again, our recommendation is not about what size the Select Board should be, it is about giving people the option to vote on whether or not to expand the Select Board. Our final.
I just have a question on.
Sure.
Because it was proposed by SIS's petition last year, so could you just explain what the difference is? Because it was voted and then voted down. So is this a different proposal than that, or just a different sponsor?
Um, I'd say the different sponsor.
I see.
I think, um.
So the committee recognizes that it went before.
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think there were a lot of factors. I want to be careful, because I don't, um, I'm not trying to imply that we're advocating for this to get on again because we want it to happen.
Yeah, sure, no, I understand.
But I think.
That's a particularly tough one, because nobody spoke to any of the staff, which is fine, but the staff are the ones that, generally speaking, and not, it's not just me, but all of the staff are impacted by that. So I would have hoped that there was something, you know, in between, and maybe, maybe that's part of studying it, is just having sort of a broader conversation under the, the standing committee, too.
And the vote at annual town meeting to begin the process of expanding the Select Board could have the caveat that staff need to be involved, or more focused.
What does that look like, begin the process? Because there's a legal begin the process, which is basically that, you know, it starts. Or there's a begin the process in, which could be, and I'm not putting where, the standing committee, and this is one of two topics that they take up in the coming year. Is that the start, or is the start like the, the actual legislative start?
I think that's a conversation, and I'd appreciate having it, you know, you know more about the legalese than I do. And, you know, I want this, you know, we're not trying to ram this through, we're trying to get the right information.
No, I think so, I was just trying to understand, when you say start, it's like, it could mean something different to everybody.
And that was, that was my one question, was what does that mean? Because the voters, there is a legal process that the voters, the last time being voted no on, beginning. And so if that's what that means, I feel like the voters have spoken, but we definitely could talk about what that's defined as. Because I think it's hard to, and I actually appreciate the delicate walk the committee is doing on this, to not say, we think it should be X or Y, but we should have the conversation. Actually, I think it's hard to begin a legal process without an understanding of where that's intended to go.
Yeah.
But, sorry, you go ahead.
Just, I want to respond to Kate about having not spoken to staff. We had it in our work plan to do a staff in, a survey. We had a mechanism for getting those surveys in an anonymous way, and we were told that that wasn't happening. So, it was not for lack of knowing how important it is to engage staff, it was lack of access.
Right, so, and, and just to be clear, it was because staff did not feel comfortable with many of the members on your committee, and didn't want to be vilified, et cetera. And I can appreciate that we are all public servants, we're all trying to do our best, but if a, a group comes to me and says, I'm not comfortable doing this, we can't compel them to do that. I just want to be clear that it shouldn't reflect poorly on them, I think they care a great deal. But everybody gets to decide whatever their threshold is to say thanks or no thanks for things outside the essential functions, and it was a, it was a hard no for, I would say, everybody but two members of the staff.
And I appreciate that we can't compel people to engage. That said, like you said, they are public servants, and the town pays their, the town residents pay their salaries, and it, I think there is a. I don't think that can be the answer indefinitely. I think, and we can work more on the actual process for how to engage staff, but I think at some point, um, not sharing their perspective stymies improvement.
And sharing their perspective leaves them vulnerable and subject to harassment.
So.
Somewhere in the middle it meets, right?
So something specific about how, and the survey that we had proposed, it was in draft form when we talked about it. It was fully anonymous, it was also really carefully worded to not be, you know, like, there was no.
Understood. I, we're not going to go back.
We weren't looking for inflammatory responses, weren't looking for personal.
Totally understand, I think it's best we move on to recommendation number three.
Okay, thank you. All right, recommendation number three is. My paper is so out of order, this is crazy. This is what I get for not stapling. All right, focus area number three was looking at the question of elected or appointed local boards. Lancaster's municipal government includes a mix of elected and appointed boards. Members elected boards are chosen at the annual town meeting each May and/or on the ballot. With a handful of exceptions, the member of appointed boards are chosen by the Select Board from a pool of applicants. We reviewed the current town boards and committees, identified whether or not they are appointed or elected, attended a webinar from the Mass Municipal Association that discussed, you know, without opining, the rationale for selecting a board by either appointment or selection. And then we conducted a survey to gauge the public interest, public preference about some of the towns' boards. The specific survey questions were, so, should, so, uh, currently elected committees include the Board of Health, Finance Committee, Library Board of Trustees, the Planning Board, and the Public Works Commissioner.
And the Select Board.
And the Select Board, thank you. Well, I, yes, I don't think.
Just saying.
We did not think to ask if the Select Board should be appointed.
Same, we are currently elected.
Uh, I think that is antithetical to the whole point. Currently appointed boards and committees, the Conservation Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I won't list off the exact numbers, but, oh, because it will be mind-numbingly boring. But the overwhelming preference was to have currently appointed boards be, rather than be appointed, be elected.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
On the, I know you all did benchmarking, towns, at least when I looked at it a long time ago, a lot of the surrounding towns and towns our size actually went the other direction. Can you speak to that from a data perspective?
I didn't talk to any other towns in doing this.
But the benchmarking.
Was really, we researched, but we didn't conduct interviews, unfortunately, and that's something that the, the standing committee could do, you know.
Well, you know, Clinton has appointed finance, appoint, they, I think the finance, or the moderator, is the moderator's appointed. There's a lot more.
Right, that's one of the options for finance, yeah.
Rather than, uh, rather than elected, so I just, I was curious, and I remember that from the benchmarking, that a lot of communities our size and surrounding us had more appointed, so I was just wondering why the.
I mean, just speaking personally, I don't think because other people do it a certain way is.
Understood, but that was what benchmarking was supposed to give us a sense of, but yeah, so.
Benchmarking is to get a picture, it's not to make decisions.
Sure. Understood.
So, we did get that picture, and still, this is what, these are not our.
So these are just, you're making the, the third recommendation only based on the majority of the survey responders?
So let me be specific about the recommendation, so I can be precise in that language. Again, papers are.
That's okay, take your time.
A little crazy, okay. Um, yeah, so in all cases, respondents preferred an elected board over appointed board. So our conclusions were that residents, residents seemed content to continually to elect, directly elect boards. No elected boards, people never responded, people did not respond overwhelmingly that currently elected boards should be appointed. Strong preference for an elected zoning board of appeals, and a preference for an elected conservation commission. And notably, the state law does not provide for that. And this was one of the limitations of our survey, was that there's a lot of background technical knowledge about how Mass general law interfaces or intersects with what you can and can't do. You know, it backstops everything. So, even though that was one of the, even though that was one of the, um, data points, if we don't, we, we can't do that, basically. So, our, I'm so sorry, I am never like this. This is upsetting to me.
It's fine, I asked.
I don't like it.
You learn from me.
I don't like it. I don't like it. Sorry, I'm just getting the exact text of our recommendation. I have to say, this is the benefit of doing this on Zoom, I have like all my tabs up, and I know exactly, and I can like click on exactly one.
You could have done it on Zoom, I wouldn't want.
I don't, I think it's good to be in person, now that we can be. Thank you for your patience. Okay, apologies. We don't, we are not making a recommendation to put this on a ballot. We are making a recommendation that this be part of what the standing committee could look into, based on the survey responses.
All right, Ms. Ann.
Yeah, that is it. I think my final words are, you know, how important it is to honor the fact that this was data-driven, this is not opinions, this is not, represent the opinions of the committee. It is a synopsis of the public feelings about it. And given the recommendations we've made, and the ones that should be voted on, or should be further explored, I think it's imperative that people get a say in that.
Can I ask you a question? So, all of this, creating a standing committee, looking into the size of the Select Board, and asking the critical questions about elected and appointed boards, as well as deconflicting some of our bylaws and MGL and whatnot. In your opinion, and I know the committee didn't opine on this, but couldn't a charter commission do, A, establish a standing committee on government, tackle in an effective way both of the, those remaining two questions?
So the reason that we, we didn't opine on anything, and the reason that we did not make a recommendation about that is because the data did not support it. I think that is largely due to the fact that the concept of a charter is not one that, you know, before I was on this commission, I didn't understand much of a charter. I think that something that the standing committee could do is take a deeper dive into educating people about that and what it is. I took Jason's, um, ask that the report be really accessible to laypeople, and so there is about 20 pages before we even get into our recommendations, explaining what a charter is, our current form of government, et cetera, et cetera, so that even if you know nothing, you can read this report. Or if you know a little bit, you can read this report and have a better sense of it. So that's why we didn't, I think a charter, a commission could do some of those things, but we just didn't have the data to recommend.
Brilliant, yeah, awesome, thank you. Any other questions for Emily? Questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? Hiccupes? Newex?
First, thank you, I read your draft report. It was excellent, as you say, it would be, it was very informative to laypeople, as well as, I think, to our board. It was, I know the amount of effort that you and the committee members put into that, and I really love it, our committee's work, and you have a diverse committee, a large committee, but it, it was, it was nice to see that compilation, so thank you for doing a great job. As far as your recommendations to us and the web product, there was a little bit of confusion tonight about a couple of, of the, of the issues that I just wanted to clear up for me, and maybe for the people out there. First, I do think that we have, I think we'd all agree that we have a wonderful staff, and they should, their thought should be included in this. Yes, they could be included, and may have been, for all we know, in the survey, we don't know, because that was anonymous. But having specific, um, reach would be important to that. The method that was identified, the anonymous survey, didn't work out. But I would ask, and you don't have that access, I know that Kate is the person who really is the conduit to the staff. And, and okay, you've had some time to look at that and think about it. Is, can you think of a good method to survey the staff? That they would be comfortable with?
I mean, are we cost-serving?
Pardon?
Are we cost-serving?
No, no, I meant to add to the.
Well, if we did it in the standing committee, perhaps, like, is, is there a way that is.
I just didn't know, I mean, to talk, to bounce off some of these concerns and a anonymous method.
I think it's important, Emily's here to answer questions about the report, and I think we're past the survey for this report.
Okay, so as a, okay, so as a Board of Selectmen member, if one, I, our job is to help try, in my, to try to solve problems. And if, if staff's participation hasn't been robust enough, then I'd love to see us.
I know, but I don't want, this is not about staff participation anymore, that there wasn't participation in the survey. We've, we've heard why, the committee understood, the committee soldiered on, and presented us with a draft report, and now is making a presentation, so I don't think it's helpful for us to go backward. I do think, perhaps, if there is a standing committee, then that's.
Yeah, I think it's a perfect, we would, I think, you know, I don't know who would be on the standing committee.
But this is here about this report.
What I'm saying is, I think when that, hopefully, when that is a thing, absolutely, help from the Select Board, and obviously, Kate, would be essential.
As far as your recommendations for the standing committee, I think that you made a really great case for that. I'm, I watched your meetings, attended some of your meetings, and my recollection was, well, for one thing, obviously, we were at the meeting when, last year, when the five-member Board of Selectmen did not pass. The reason that I sensed, now, we don't know how each person voted out there, and it wasn't overwhelming in any case, but how, why it didn't pass was because we, as the Board of Selectmen, said, we have a Government Study Committee that's looking at that, so let's give the Government Study Committee, allow them to finish their job. And I think people respected a group of volunteers and said, let them finish their jobs. And I think people respected a group of volunteers and said, let them finish their jobs. So, at least in my head, that was a bona fide reason, so I don't, there's been many times where it's, whether it be zoning, which we just tried again, you know, or something like this, but I think, I think it's very responsible to have the people vote.
That's a great point.
The, the committee meeting that I watched said, did define a number, based on the data from the survey, defined five. One of the things that I don't think people realize is that if this goes to town meeting in May and is approved, it's the beginning of a multi-year process, the five.
But we don't know that, because we don't know what they're presenting. Because we haven't defined the start of the process.
Okay, so pardon me, just let me finish my thought. So, the five-member Board of Committee, should it go to, and I don't know what you're gonna do, I'm not asking you to do that. Should that be what you suggest, should you suggest seven, should you suggest something else? A home rule legislation has to go to the legislature and then has to go back to the voters, so it's a multi-year process at best. And we know from other home rule legislation that some, how many years, that two years is the minimum. And the voters will have several cracks at it, and there'll be opportunity for staff. So, the worst thing I think we could do to a group of volunteers is, who have put some, you know, years and hours of meetings into that, is, and people who responded to the survey and talked about it, is marginalize it, to be honest with you. I think we, I think it needs to, I think it needs to see the light of day. Delected appointed boards, yes, it needs to be studied more. I know that the survey results, the data that you talked about favor that, but we do need to educate people.
Absolutely.
You're right.
That was one of the things, you know, when I talked about MGL, you know, people were given a binary of like, it should remain or it shouldn't. And that didn't allow for people who didn't know whether or not it could be changed, so.
Yeah, I am one of those people, I'm a government junkie.
Yeah.
I studied political science, I love government, I've sat here for many years, I know what a charter is. But if you ask most people, they think it's a cable provider, right? I have, I even have signatures from way back, when I tried to get a charter going. I looked at them the other day, dust them off, because they're still good, and half the people had passed on the list. That's how long that we've been looking at this. A charter like, a charter is, takes much longer than this home rule legislation would be. And I fear that if we send everything to charter, a charter, or wait for a charter, it'll be years before we have any substantive change. Now.
Move, we've waited 371 years.
I know, I know.
We can stick it out to get the right thing.
Sometimes I think we're still looking at the goats out in the green. But the point is, the, that, there are things that are, that are less, this is what I call low-hanging fruit. I mean, I don't think that this substantively hurt anybody, but people will stand up, I'm quite sure if they feel that it will, or respond in some, in some different way, but these, these seem like no-brainers to me. For now, sure.
Well, let's.
I can always, I can always, I know, I can always speak again if I need to, but I'll try my best not to pain you.
Why don't we legit get everything out now, and then we'll go to Jason, and then I'll ask any final questions, and we'll be done. Go ahead.
No, 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 I'm just saying, continue, Jason.
No, your time, he's not, he's not taking your time.
Listen to me, if something comes up, I have, as far as I know, I'm done, if something comes up, because Jason is always full of good points, then maybe I'll respond to it.
Emily, welcome to public service. How's it been?
It's, honestly, it's great.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I grew up in a small town, I remember, you know, the weekly paper talking about this stuff, and to be an adult and part of it. I think it's probably a sign that I've finally become an actual adult, that this excites me.
Well, that's some positivity, because you've been.
Or you've become something else.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure that's what they call that adult.
It's been traumatic for me, so I'm glad you're having that experience. So, I'm looking at the Town Government Study Committee, 2022-2023 Committee, mission in charge, talks about the resident Lancaster, together in a town meeting, May 2nd, voted to establish a government study committee, which will work to advise the Select Board on matters related to the structure and effectiveness of Lancaster's form of government. So, in this document, there's a section which states, care and consideration shall be given to the following questions regarding the structure and operation of Lancaster's government. You're the only one we got tonight. This is your time, I'm gonna ask you those questions, and you're gonna give me the best answers you can. You can state if it's your opinion or the committee's opinion, or the committee doesn't have an opinion. But I'm gonna run down every one of them, and I just wanna get, because this is the end. So, I wanna make sure that I've gotten answers, at least the board's gotten answers to every one of those questions. Is Lancaster's structure of government ineffective?
So, this line of questioning, Steve has been pushing to focus on the report. I did not come tonight with well-thought-out answers to every question, I think there's like 15. So, I mean, I, I feel like I'm just gonna say no comment, because I don't feel qualified to opine on that. And I have, do not have my committee's opinions, and I do not have survey data on it.
Should Lancaster have an official town charter?
I think she answered that. Well, that she's, I mean, at least I feel like you answered, but you don't have an opinion on it, and neither does the committee.
I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer those questions.
So, any of them? So, the committee doesn't have a question, answers to any of these questions, that were in the?
I mean, for a charter, is it, is it the right option? We asked people, is this what you want, and we did not get conclusive answers.
Okay, so, I'm struggling, right? Because I, I didn't get involved in the government study committee, I, I didn't really play a role. But we did vote this in, and these are the questions it says to look at, so I'm trying to come full circle and answer those questions. If, if what you're saying is that, that based on feedback from members who went a different route, that's cool, got no issues with that. But for me, like, looking at this from a thousand feet up, and I don't know any of the trials and tribulations everybody went through, I'm not here to judge. I'm here to try to think about next steps, right? And then my next steps, how am I gonna vote on, on, you know, whether we're presenting something at a town meeting, whether we're endorsing something or not endorsing something? Like, the town charter one is, is what I think is most important. And if I were to surmise, it would be that the committee maybe didn't get far enough, and maybe didn't investigate that enough, didn't get enough conclusive information, and would recommend that a Standing Committee be formed and investigated further, is that a reasonable answer to that?
It is, so we were first convened in, I think, August of 2022, we were appointed in June of 2022. Between August of 2022 and October of 2023, I believe it was 19 meetings were scheduled and 11 were canceled. We went as much as three months without a meeting. Then we had a change in board composition, we had a change in board leadership, we had a change in who our staff liaison was. So, there were a lot of impediments, and I'm not saying they were, you know, intentional or manipulative, I'm just saying there were a lot of things that.
Glad you're not, because I was the first chair of those.
I know you were, I know you were.
And I will say, the cancellations were due to lack of quorum.
Not all of them.
The vast majority of them were.
I can go, if you want, I can go.
I don't think that's the purpose of this meeting.
I don't think so either, but.
Keep going.
In terms of the facts, it's, it's not that there weren't quorums, there were a few that were not quorums.
No, I'm saying, keep going on your answer.
So, I think, did we get to dig in deep enough? No. On, I think, October 30th, I spoke up when the committee was proposed to be dissolved, to produce their final report in two weeks and be dissolved. I spoke up and said, okay, how about instead of a report in two weeks, I give a work plan? I didn't get to present that work plan until December 19th, I think. As my risk mitigation things on the work plan, I put availability on Select Board agenda and availability of staff. So, it took six weeks to even present the work plan, during which time, I didn't wanna push my committee to do a lot of work. If we were, if we were going to present the work plan and say thank you, no. Then we committed to, actually, at the very first meeting where I committed to a work plan after two weeks, you asked for the first week of January, we were ready, and we were not on the agenda. So, we've had a lot of impediments to getting the go-ahead to dig further. And I didn't push my committee to do that, because if we weren't going to get the green light, I wouldn't.
The question of a charter or not a charter wasn't an October question.
So, so let me, let me apologize. First, let me apologize for, I'm confident I'm sounding argumentative. I'm confident I'm not coming off in the, in the, in the way I need to be coming off. Which is, somebody who's looking in, I have to figure out how to manage all of this. What I have is, listen, you've done amazing work, okay? You're a volunteer, you should absolutely be proud, but I still have a job to do, right?
Absolutely.
And I need to kind of process this. And, and the answer may be, you know, I don't even know what the answer is, that's kind of why I'm thinking through these questions. And if the answer is no comment to all of them, totally cool, no judgment. If I'm gonna judge anybody, it's just gonna be Steve, and, and that's where all my disdain goes, right?
Totally fair.
So. In the section of our report that recommends the Standing Committee, we put those questions, because they are such good framing questions. And I think with a more concentrated sense of a mandate, and, and more, not sense of a mandate, sorry, that's inaccurate, with more momentum, and just a, a committee that met regularly, I think those questions are really good questions, and they're, they frame what the, what a government study committee should do really well.
Yeah, I, I'm zeroing in on, me personally, I'm zeroing in on the charter question, because I think that's what Lancaster's missing. I think that's what Lancaster is needing, and a part of me is looking for a reason to move off of that. You know, we haven't really talked about it, so I don't know if I can move off it. But that's part of why I'm asking this, is to kind of help me get my thoughts together. Did the committee talk at all about whether open town meeting should be legislative, whether it should be legislative?
Yes, and people favored that. One of the, there were, there were some open-ended questions, and I think the most, the highest percentage of responses about a topic was about annual town meeting and its organization and things like that, so people are in support of it, and.
And sorry, isn't it, I, you would know this probably, Matt, isn't there like a, is there like a population threshold?
I think it's 10,000.
Yeah, so we sit, we sit at open town meeting, no matter, if we have, if we hit 10,000.
Is it 8,000? It's 8,000, and then you can have a, you can't have a representative town meeting at less than 8,000, I believe.
And we have 84, okay.
We have 84, but we, there are some caveats there with the Susa Baranowski property.
Any feedback on should changes to the town budget process coordination review?
We did not have time to look at that.
But we did change it.
Yes.
So, how do you like that?
So there.
So, they did it.
That's fantastic.
Was there any kind of conversation on, that the last bullet here, which talks about capitalizing on opportunities offered through technology to help further Lancaster's mission and goals, is there any conversation on that?
There was a lot of conversation on that, vis-à-vis communications from town to residents and inter-board communications. Chief Moody was part of that subgroup. We looked at a few specifically, like, software specifically designed for municipal government communications, where it, you know, aggregates communications from different departments and sends them out in one digest, without someone having to put them all together. Sue Money brought examples of ways that other communities have done it, they were pretty heavy for, it would be, you know, a serious thing for a staff member to do, and that's why we looked at the technology for the communication. So, yes, we did look at that.
All right, so those are the questions from the, from the sheet, for the most part. I wanna talk a little bit about, there seemed to be a good bit of conversation about Select Board size. So, that's definitely a solution? What were the problems that that's going to solve?
So, as I've said, so, there are a lot of government study reports, municipal, Mass Municipal Association presentations on this sort of thing, because we didn't hear from residents, and we didn't, once we restarted in earnest, didn't have much time. You know, it's been not even, I think it's like exactly three months now, since we were reinvigorated. We simply didn't have the time to dig into that. And it's one of the reasons that we recommend the Standing Committee.
It's a hard one, right? I, I think traditionally, I'm more of like, if it's not broken, don't fix it. Because there are some towns that are going up, some towns that are going down, and you don't really know why each of them are doing it, or what the context is, at least to that sort of thing. So, I'm kind of in the boat, I guess, that Steve's in, which is, you know, there, there was some conversation at town meeting. You know, we did say let the, let the government committee do the investigation, but I'm at the point where I'm not sure what problem we're trying to solve, and I respect the question being asked, but I don't know how to vote on it. I mean, I know how I would vote on it, but I don't know how to, to put it, to frame, to frame an answer to that that's based on, like, context. So, that would, that would be unsolicited advice to the government study committee, just from a single board member. Would be, make sure we outline the problems that we're solving, to help address, you know, solutions that we're proposing.
So, we had collated a lot of information about the benefits, the pros and cons of three, five, seven. But simply put, I think it would have jeopardized the recommendations of this committee if we had put in our report the problems that it was trying to solve, without having asked residents more specifically. So, it was very intentional that we did not, we, and what we're saying is, based that 59% of people think that the Select Board should be bigger than three, there's an appetite to discuss this. This doesn't, our recommendation to, you know, put this to a vote on whether or not, you know, and we can go over, you know, the legal process versus, you know, the, you know, fact-finding process. Putting this to a vote is because of the appetite that we observed. So, that's where, I was very, very mindful, you know, Steve had said, in the meeting where he proposed that we wrap up and, you know, give our report, that what the committee wasn't supposed to do is opine on the things that a Charter Commission would or would not do. I took that, and my committee took that really seriously, that this is not an opinion piece. So, I think, if you want, I mean, I could give you, like, MMA has, I believe, you know.
I'm interested in Lancaster, like, yeah, like, what?
So am I.
What, what problems in Lancaster will this solve?
Yep. And putting this on the ballot doesn't mean that between now and then, we can't, you can't opine about it, you know, in public or, you know, as a private citizen. It doesn't mean that anyone in this room can't write a letter, can't make a Facebook post about it. It doesn't end the conversation by putting it to a vote.
If you'd both give me two seconds, you would raise your hand, I don't know if you want, if your chair wants to.
Just a comment, like, because I've dealt so much with, you know, Board of Trustees, or in a larger board, and what that afforded them, this ability to dive deep into a particular topic, and that's, I think, you know, a benefit of having a larger board. I mean, it's a volunteer, it doesn't cost the taxpayers additional money to have more Select Board members, but it allows you to meet in a subcommittee, dive deeper, have more, more opportunity, like with the library, to, to have a deeper dive. And that's the, that was just a comment.
And I can absolutely present you the pros and cons.
And how many towns in the state?
I would just point, I would just point out that I think those town employees who have to deal with the elected members of the board might think if there are two or four more of them, that it is a lot more work to have to work with them on that. But, so it might end up costing more resources, but I hear, I definitely hear your point, and I didn't mean to interrupt your question, so. I just wanted to recognize, because she was a member of the committee.
In closing, thank you. Welcome to public service. It's a thankless job, you get in front of the camera, you get in front of all of your friends, people you know, people that you don't know. And you become vulnerable, and you share your opinion and do the best you can, and it's really easy for lots of people to throw stones. So, I, if I can have one ask, it's to keep going, even if people don't, don't agree with you. You bring, you bring fresh ideas and thoughtful, thoughtful interaction. And, you know, we don't have to agree on everything or anything, but we definitely need more folks like you in town participating like this, so I just wanna say thank you.
Sure, and I, in my experience, it hasn't been thankless. That doesn't mean it's all puppies and rainbows, but I've gotten emails from many people in town thanking me for the work, so.
You're doing something I'm not doing, I don't know.
Don't, you don't point that out to everybody.
Yeah, it may be good for us, and for the Government Study Committee, to revisit the charge that, for example, Jason was just reading. Because I looked at what people, pulled up what people actually voted on. actually voted on. And it's not that specific. There were other materials handed out.
It doesn't mention the charter.
No, it says to study the towns, to read, just so people understand, the group was supposed to be seven me, seven members, and the charges were, A, to study the town's form of government and governance, which you've begun to do, but I think, understanding that it is a Herculean task, suggested the standing committee examine models of government in comparable communities. Again, it sounds like you've looked. I wouldn't say studied. Identify strengths and opportunities for growth and improvement in town's government. That's the way I took your report, is the beginning of that, is this was a strength, this was an opportunity for improvement. And to facilitate public engage, it says, on, I think it probably should be engagement, on the committee's work. And provide written status report to the Board of Selectmen no later than March 15, 2023. I know that took a little longer than we had hoped for, but not too bad, if we can get there by, by 2024. And a final report to town meeting. So again, with my quaint notion of trying to respect town meeting votes, I think that the report would be well-suited to go forward to town meeting.
Danielle?
I think I'm doomed.
Uh, I, first, I want to echo the thanks of everyone here. It is a, even though you feel like you've been thanked by enough people, it is a thankless task that we tasked you with, and your committee, fellow committee members tasked you with. So I'm grateful to you and through you, to the whole committee, for the work that you have done and will continue to do. I love the idea of the standing committee. You and I have talked about the other ideas, and I'll leave my opinions to other things. But I, I really do love the idea of the standing committee. And so I guess my, my, the last question, which I wasn't planning on asking, but you just answered to Jason's question about three to five to seven, or whatever it was, you said, it's one of the reasons for this, like, answering that question's one of the reasons for the standing committee? And maybe, I just wanted to see if that's, if you either wanted to collect, because if it is, then it seems worth a little chicken and egg-ish. If you, I just want to give you a chance to clarify if that's what you...
I don't, so I think what I said was, it was one of the things that made us think about a standing committee, where there are things that need more, more exploration. It wasn't something that we necess, we, we certainly didn't recommend punting it to that committee, but I'm, you know, not opposed to that. I think if...
No, so I, I, I just want, that's why I wanted to make sure I clarified, because I was, was confused by that. But that makes total sense. So I thank you for your time, your presentation, your service, for sitting before the firing squad of questions. And I'm looking forward to keeping the conversation going and seeing what happens at town meeting.
Yeah. And just thank you. I appreciate all your feedback. I appreciate your attention to it and sticking with me through my shuffling of papers. I think in terms of being thankless, I, it's not easy, and it's not glamorous, but being able to live in a town where a single individual can speak to the people who do the policy of the town is something to be grateful for. And because of the access that it gives me to affecting change, or just being part of the process, I'm not in your shoes. I don't get the same level of scrutiny that you do. But knowing that that's the point helps me when things are hard.
Well said.
Okay, all right.
It can be very rewarding.
Thank you very much.
It can be very rewarding.
Very well said. Very well said. All right. Now to the Hawthorne Lane development. Okay, how do we want to tackle the task of Hawthorne Lane?
Um, okay.
This evening.
I bet this will still have an item, I thought.
Yeah.
Please. Okay, so I guess I'll, I'll start with a very brief overview. Hawthorne Lane is a subdivision that is off of Hilltop Road. It also abuts George Hill. And it started in concept around 2015. Since that time, we have a completely different select board, planning board. We've had two planning directors since then, a town administrator, an interim town administrator, and then myself. We have new town council, and we are on the third building commissioner. We had a commissioner, then an inspector, now another commissioner. So needless to say, there's, there's been quite a few hands in the project, and there's been a lot of opinions on the project. So it's here before you tonight because the project as it is today is pretty substantially unfinished. And there is time legally, despite the fact that some folks think that there may not be, for the builder to complete it. But the board needs to have some decisions about what to happen, if and when that doesn't happen. So again, the concept began in 2015. The planning board endorsed the plan, the official subdivision plan, on February 12 of 2018. There was many iterations prior to that, but that date is important because on April 3 of 2020, Governor Baker signed into law Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, which actually told the expiration date for all permits and approvals in existence as of March 10, 2020, for as long as a state of emergency was in place. And so the state of emergency was in place for 462 days. And so the developer has five years plus 462 days to complete the work. And so that is May 19 of this year. So I understand that it's frustrating for a number of people who have been...
Sorry, clarifying. May 19 of this year is when...
2024.
Is when the five years plus 462 days.
462 days expires.
May 19.
And so unless the town were to have a subsequent agreement, a side agreement, something else with the developer, whereby there are some concessions made by either side about what to do, we legally don't have a cause of action until May 19 of 2024 has expired relative to some of the things there. One of the major hurdles is that that development has access to and has punched into the town's water system. And so there's a booster station that is located in what was supposed to be, according to the plan, open space that was then going to be gifted in perpetuity to the Conservation Commission with a restriction on it. Unfortunately, through something that we can likely explore, but I'm not sure going that back in the Wayback Machine matters, but for some reason, that was built almost square in the middle of that. And so it, it absolutely renders the Conservation Commission not only probably unable, but I have heard that they would be unwilling because it isn't bona fide open space. So that's absolutely inaccurate way to think about it. But notwithstanding that, moving the booster station or discontinuing the booster station without having some kind of plan leaves both the residents at risk, but it also has a risk to the water system. And recently, the EAP has come out to do the water system inspections, which they do every few years. And the EAP had cited...
You tell the folks.
I'm sorry, the Environmental Protection for the, for the state of Massachusetts. D E, no, it's, it's environmental that came out. And so the Department of Environmental Protection is a different thing, but the EPA are the ones that deal with the water systems. And so the water system folks from the state came out, and what is required for the flexible permit is, prior to the endorsement of the definitive subdivision approval, the applicant, meaning the builder, would need to provide the planning board with a 30-foot wide utility easement spanning one of the proposed lots and the open space west of the development. And the easement would allow the town essentially to tie into the water level. That didn't happen, but notwithstanding that, the, the developer and the homes are tied into the water. So if, in fact, we want to go through this and button that part up, that takes an act of town meeting, both to grant the easement and, and work with the planning board. I know one of the speakers, Mr. Guilford, said that the select board, you know, is tasked with upholding or enforcing the rules and regulations of the subdivision plan. That, that isn't true. It's fundamentally untrue. That's the planning board. As a matter of fact, it's the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. And the reason for that is sort of that, that disconnect. Now, that doesn't mean that the board can't be involved in that, but as far as, like, actual action, that really needs to be a planning board conversation, a zoning board of appeals conversation, and likely a legal conversation with the select board, of course, just in the spirit of collaboration. But I just want the board to understand that we don't, the board, nor my office, does not have the ability to sanction. That really is in the hands of the planning board. So then the other thing comes to the road. So there are many things that are outstanding on the road, actual Hawthorne Lane. Many of them had been cleared up in 2022, in October. The town staff who were there at the time that were involved in this, someone from the planning office, myself and the, and the builder, Matt, we kind of went through a punch list. We started up in earnest. A lot of the things that I would consider low-hanging fruit were taken care of, curb stops put in, the road was completed, and the binder was put down. We never got to do a boring, which is generally done before a town would accept a road, but the idea that this was part of the development was that this wasn't going to be a town-accepted road. This was going to be a homeowners' association. And somehow, which I think probably is definitely worth exploring here, somehow, the homeowners' association never came to fruition, and persons were not only able to purchase the lots, but they were able to build upon those lots and then received a certificate of occupancy. And that isn't the residents' fault. That, that's the fault of some, somewhere in the, in the town government and, you know, whatever legal parameters that went through. Yes?
Mr. Sheriff, it's okay. May I read to that?
May you read to it?
Yeah, so I, so...
I don't know what that means, but yes.
All right, so these are Board of Selectmen minutes from September 9, 2020. Update on occupancy permits. Selectman Allison wrote the following regarding the booster station next steps. Lancaster made some mistakes in issuing occupancy permits. Specifically, we did issue some occupancy permits prior to the HOA, and even a smaller amount issued prior to the booster station going online. While this was not ideal, it's my understanding that it did not change any of the outcomes of the development. Speaking with the town administrator, not the town administrator Hodges, Lancaster has learned it needs a tighter process around the issuing of special permits and conditions of those permits when it comes to issuing occupancy permits. Specifically, the planning department has created an occupancy permit checklist to help ensure that this does not happen again. I believe a checklist has been completed and is ready for use. It is my understanding that this is the extent that the Board of Selectmen, the Board can influence this situation at this time. So that is the history going back to September 9, 2020.
And that is the extent that the select board still can influence. However, so all, all of that remains true. What I don't know, as if it were noticed at the time, is that in the Worcester Registry of Deeds, there's a trust document that was recorded, we'll just get a date here, May 20 of 2020. And the trust document is actually specific to the road. So it is a trust document with the Melanson Brothers Incorporated, and it's called the Hawthorne Lane Trust. And it is the trust for the building lots that were not built at the time, and now they are, and the common area expenses, so the mowing of the open space, and now whatever we're calling it, plus around the pump house that's there, and the maintenance of the roadway. And so this trust hasn't been revoked. As a matter of fact, it's in place, essentially, it says it's in place up until the town takes ownership. And the town can only take ownership through an act of town meeting. My understanding is this did happen with a subdivision in Eagle Ridge, where at one point Eagle Ridge was touted to be a private lane, private roadway, and, and a citizens' petition, I think, was brought forward at town meeting and ultimately accepted. And so the town accepted that road. So it doesn't have to be a citizens' petition. It can certainly be, which is another thing that the select board could do, it certainly could be a select board, petition could be a planning board, it could be a joint. But it, it certainly can't just unilaterally land on this board to decide tonight that you want to do it, even if this board has, you know, a desire to, to want to do it, to make things right. And I'll, I'll tell you why. Because we, meaning the, the town, the municipality, are not allowed to spend public funds on private ways without an act of town meeting. And so as much as there, if it's a health and safety issue, meaning that a, you know, fire engine or a police car couldn't, couldn't get up or couldn't navigate the area, that's a different situation. But just to generally sand, salt, and plow, we can't do. So I guess all of this is to lead up to everything that I was able to find in the records that predate me and predate the other staff members. We've aggregated into a large file that we sent to town council. So town council has changed since we had KP laws. So they had been given all of KP laws, the things that they had done there, correspondence that they had with the then select board. And in speaking with council, there's a lot of things that we don't know. I've spoken to plenty of residents who have said, you know, one was the abutters weren't notified unless you were a direct abutter to the street outlet. But the definition of a abutter is really the, all of the property. So, so they, they are an aggrieved party too. So I think we, we need to come up with a list of questions, other than the ones that are obvious, hear from, which I know you're planning to do tonight, hear from both abutters, residents of Hawthorne Lane, of George Hill, anyone else that, you know, just has a question. Send that all to the now planning board and get their opinions. And I know town council is available to come back on the 5th of February, and is going to be able to talk about this, where you all could at least get the answers to those questions, and hopefully design some path forward, whatever that means. In a perfect world, we would be working with the builder and come to some understanding, including, you know, what we have to do. Lastly, I've heard a lot of conversation about a bond. Unfortunately, the, the Melanson brothers were not given or required to have a bond in the conventional sense. There is an escrow account. The escrow account is a dual signatory. So when folks have said, why don't you just pull their bond, it, it really isn't that simple, because there's no bond to pull. What happens is that there's this account of money that, by the way, I've heard the term, I've heard $80,000, it's not anywhere close to $80,000. That has to be a dual signatory. So there has to be some conversation between the town and either the developer or a third party for the developer to come to an understanding if, in fact, the town was going to complete, complete the work. So unfortunately, there is no, but there's no law that requires a bond. What the planning board did relative to the escrow account is, is 100% permissible. The problem becomes, what happens when you have this particular situation? So it could be a policy decision of the planning board to decide that when and if future development is going to happen, that they're requiring both a performance and a construction bond. But again, that's a policy decision, and there was nothing that was done that...
And again, neither of those exists for this project.
They did not exist for this project, no.
Can I have a quick question on the weird aspect of that? I was, I mean, this is not going to get back to it. This, this bond, not bond, that was permissible, how did that happen? That sounds very awkward.
Well, it's not a bond.
Yeah, the not bond thing.
So there's a different, there's a couple of different things under Mass General Law and subdivision law about how you can retain a certain portion of, I guess...
So two signatories though, right?
Yeah, so this would, so this requires both the, the vendor, or the developer, and some entity of the town. So...
So just any entity of the town?
Well, no, someone from the pla, I'm sorry, someone from the planning board. And then obviously, that has to be certified through the finance department. And then that goes to the bank, and the bank account that that's in is separate from the town.
So somebody from the current planning board needs to... So somebody from the current planning board needs to sign in, and the finance department needs to.
Correct. And the last thing that happened, which was several years ago, was that the developer came and asked for somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 back from this account, and the planning board denied that. And so that money is still there, but.
The previous planning board.
The previous planning board, I'm sorry, or two previous, a while ago.
So we can deny them, but they can also deny us.
Correct.
It feels like however that got set up is not advantageous to the town.
Which is why, and I know that the current planning board is aware of that, certainly the chair, and that isn't in practice anymore, but it doesn't stop what was the practice in 2018.
I hope we don't do that anymore.
Eighteen.
Sorry, Mr. Sheriff, thank you.
That's quite all right. All right.
Well, I don't know if Frank is on, and I don't know.
I'm going to see if these folks have any questions.
I just don't want to speak for the planning board, but I.
Right, so I just, I want to go through what our process will be moving forward. Are you?
I'm done. That's the hill of beans.
The whole kit and caboodle. So what I'm going to see is if members of this board have additional questions, not for Kate necessarily to answer now, although she has the answers, great, but really this is about getting questions from this board to Kate that we can then run through the planning board and then the council, so that we can have more answers back here on February 5th. So once the board is done, then we'll throw it open to the public to ask, I hope this is very sort of level-setting for folks to have a base knowledge of what has happened and clear up some of the confusion. And then after this board goes, if Frank is on, which he is, so Frank, if you want to offer some comments, that's totally appropriate. If you do not, that's perfectly fine as well. There'll be plenty of time to discuss this in future meetings. So Alex, do you have any questions that you would like Kate to put on the list so that we can tackle them through the planning board and council?
I do, sure. First, thank you for the recap. It was, it's a very convoluted case, so you summarized it nicely. And I think it was helpful to know that May 19th is our deadline, so we have to do this most expeditiously. Jason, I know a couple months ago we had voted you sort of liaison or talk about the Hawthorne, and I don't know if you wanted to add anything to it or if there's anything relevant. I'm sure you will, but.
He's going to have a chance to ask questions and make comments, but.
Well, I just, as, as.
He has questions, yeah.
And I understand that most of this project was what we like to call pre-Kate, pre-Steve.
Pre-me.
Yeah, pre-all of us, but it's, we came, we came in and out. I think I have some notes back from Jeff Nutting's day. I'm sure you probably still have them, hopefully, but if you don't, let me know. One thing, as far as bonds go, I go back sometime with a big hiatus in the middle. We used to require bonds. I understand why developers would not want bonds because they're expensive and cumbersome to do sometimes, but they are traditionally the tools that municipalities use just because of things like this, because we can do it. And I know you said that that's a planning board or ZBA decision. My question would be if the Board of Selectmen can require bonds on any project of, you know, we can name the size, the threshold, it doesn't have to be an individual home, because like this is a perfect example of getting, getting messy. If we could get an accounting of, I've heard the numbers too, I think Jeff told us $84,000, and that had dwindled down from some, but it wasn't, if we could get an accounting of how much money has been expended, what it was, and where it would go, that might help to see what things have been paid off. You spoke of.
So, sorry to clarify, you're asking for an accounting of how much is left in the non-bond.
The escrow account. Oh, yeah, and also what's been, what has been spent, like how much we started with, where we go. For example, if the developer would say, oh, I spent X amount of dollars doing something, we would see what was done from, and what the previous planning board.
Right, keep, some of these questions may not be answerable, but yes.
Well, that, that one, that one would be, because it's signing up.
Well, we don't have the backcrackers necessarily, but yeah, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I think we would.
A lot of people thought it was a bond too, but it isn't.
That's true. So, so the first question that I had asked is if we can, I think we can, but establish a town policy as we have done with other things like professional reviews and so on, if we could establish a town one that we require bonds over a certain dollar amount or time, and what the criteria is for those bonds. The second thing is I think hearing from abutters is crucial, and it's a really great idea to try to do that, and from residents as well. And the other thing, I'd like to think that we are the star here, and every, you know, stuff stops on Monday nights and everybody watches us like the Super Bowl, but I don't know. It would be nice to be able to reach out to people via letter or emails or some way once we identify an abutters list, an appropriate abutters list, so we make sure that we actually capture people whom we miss this conversation. You spoke about.
To say what?
Just to tell them that we are, that this is going on and that we are coming down to the end, and if they feel that they have any questions that they want answered.
Sending a notice about two fines meeting to, I dropped a pin in the center and spread it out, so it's even a abutters of a abutters.
That's good. That's excellent.
Check.
Good.
So it's not.
So check.
Look.
No, but that's just the concept. You spoke about the road, and we didn't get to do a road boring. I know there would be some question, because the residents have asked to have, informally, they haven't asked formally yet, but they've made indication that they expected the road to be public. And one of the questions is going to be about the road base and the quality, so I don't know if that's something that we have to wait until this is through.
So the DPW superintendent has looked at it and said that it conforms.
Okay, so we need, yeah.
It's just we, the town superintendent did it rather than having some outside.
And also I think looking at a policy, because since I've been here, we go back far enough to remember the permitting of Eagle Ridge and Turner Pond, and these, every developer comes in and looks for, because of our flexible, flexible development bylaw, they come in and they ask for concessions from the town, which the town grants them because they go to have the roads, and the utilities are going to be private, so it's not going to cost us. And I do not blame the people who live there for coming to town meeting by citizens' petition or whatnot. You spoke to Eagle Ridge, they had approached the town, the town had said that they didn't want to take over the roads, but they did a citizens' petition, and good for them, you know, it's a public road. So if we either have a policy or acknowledgement that things are going to be public, or we could factor it in when we're giving the concessions, this is a planning board decision, but we have to realize that it's reality, it's happened repeatedly. And another.
Sorry, I need, what's the, the question is, can you create a policy that's attached to the development that says that someone couldn't come to town meeting to undo it?
No, but maybe we need to look at our flexible development concessions.
That's not a question for the builders. That's a question for us across the board.
Well, it's a question to work with Frank and the planning board and discussion, because it impacts our finances.
But is it important, we're focused on Hawthorne Lane.
Yeah, I, well, I do.
We want to talk about that for like a future thing, but folks are here to hear about Hawthorne Lane.
Well, we're coming up to town meeting, so I do think it's, and the timing is, the impetus of this is good. The importantly, I noticed.
Just sorry, do you have a clarity on what you'd ask?
Not that one, but that's okay.
Can you rephrase it?
Sure. If we could work in conjunction with a planner and the planning board now that this has come up and we're heading to town meeting, if there is any sort of language that other towns do or that council would suggest to protect Lancaster when evaluating the developments from making the concessions and then having the, them overturned by citizens' petition. In other words, do we just require all roads be public?
Yeah.
Or do we have some kind of, again, bond or something else? I don't know what the vehicle would be.
So I can answer that, because I don't, there isn't one to take, you can't take the ability away from town meeting, as that's our legislative body. So there's nothing that you, well, but there's nothing that you could put in to say this is the way it always has to be. There's always going to be a way that town meeting could petition the others to change it.
Yeah, for example, I was saying, what I, my thought was, and this is getting deeper into the weeds, is that we just require developments to make the roads public, because they're going to be anyway, and we factored that out, but in any reading. So, and one of the things that was troubling is I was looking at land transfers, looking for other things. I noticed Eagle Ridge landed a transfer, and I thought it looks like, I could be wrong, that the town took the, the land from maybe the trust that the pump station is on, the open space for town.
So it's in tax title. We didn't take, they're two different things, so the notion is that when something's in tax title, that all of a sudden it becomes the town's. And so right now, it's basically in a holding pattern, and the people who own it that are delayed on their taxes have an opportunity either to pay those in full or to develop some kind of program. They have to be in arrears for a year and a quarter. So we wouldn't be able to take it in title unless we were going to sue them or amount of time has passed.
That's fine, I thought, I thought it started deed, but I was wrong, I was wrong, so.
Any other questions about the Hawthorne Lane thing? You've got great ideas on some potential policy changes, but any questions specific to this?
Not right now, no.
Okay.
Yeah, I do want to talk to the residents for a sec, so the situation stinks. Stinks for the abutters. You go to sleep one day, you wake up and there's a pumping station across the street from you. Didn't expect that there. You expected open space, and that's what you expected, and that's not there. And then you come to learn that the town made mistakes and issued occupancy permits when they shouldn't have. So abutters have a serious gripe. Next, planning board, conservation commission, ZBA, a lot of boards, expected things to go a certain way and they didn't, and it's a big mess, absolute big mess. Next is town staff. We're just trying to do the right thing, and there is no easy way around it. I had read minutes from three years ago, four, three and a half years ago, and this still hasn't been resolved. But my, my heart goes most out to the people on Hawthorne Lane. You buy a not inexpensive house in Lancaster, you're, you know, you believe, you're led to believe certain things will happen, the road will be accepted, you will get plowing and you will be safe going up and down a very, very steep hill. I know it because I like to run up it every once in a while, and it is very, very steep. Then snow and ice comes, and not passing judgment, but plowing is coming at a certain rate, and as a resident, you feel that that rate is not satisfactory, and you have fears, serious fears that something bad could happen, and you won't be able to get emergency support. And I feel for those people also. So what I want to tell to everybody is there is zero easy answers, zero. And everybody's going to have to give, and if I have to be the person to say that, that's my job, that's why I was elected. It is not going to be a good salute, it's not going to be the best solution for everybody because there is no solution that's best for everybody. So I'm very proud that we have Kate to be able to handle this, but it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge, and I just ask that everybody figures out a way to be empathetic to everyone else around and figure out a path forward. So my proposal is the following. First, make sure we involve conservation commission in it. I got an email from a conservation commission member, a lot of good ideas in there, I thought that was great. You already have a abutters. But I would like to, I'm of the opinion that we should be soliciting solutions, right? Somebody invent the perfect mousetrap to solve this. And I hope that we can have a list of a bunch of them and maybe pick one that's perfect or, you know, grab a few from another's, but we are at solution stage, and I can tell you it's not going to be, well, I don't want the pump station there, and I can tell you it's not going to be, well, just accept the road, right? Like, those are not the answers. We're going to have to have a little bit of imagination, a little ingenuity, and a little empathy. But what I'd recommend anybody listening in, anybody who's passionate about solving this, is propose a solution. Got a really good email from Mona Butter with a number of solutions in there, and I haven't had a chance to deep dive into it, but that's when it dawned on me, like that's the stage we're at, solution stage. What can, what can we do to get past this? Because it is high time we figure out a solution, so thank you.
Frank, did you have anything you want to say? You don't need to, don't, you just feel compelled to, but I wanted to give you the option. If you do, great, if not, we'll move on.
I have to unmute him.
Throw up a hand or a wave or, or I'm just going to move on. All right, fantastic.
Frank?
He's unmuted.
He's muted.
I know, I just hit his unmute.
It didn't work.
He can unmute.
Okay, well, town speaker. So here's how we will do this. We will loosely follow our public comment rules, mostly because we want to make sure folks are heard. And so from their name, address, two minutes at first if possible, and then we can go from there. And then if you're online, again, throw your virtual hand up and you'll be recognized in the order that you're seen. So if you would like to speak, you can make a line and move up to the podium.
Thank you. Larry Shore, 750 George Hill Road. I am summarizing a letter sent by Emily Rose and Larry Shore to the Selectboard. We ask the Selectboard to carefully consider and to take positive action on the following. One, implement the planning board required perpetual conservation or agricultural preservation restriction on the open space parcel. Two, install vandal and graffiti-resistant signage at entry points and at the ATV and dirt bike track to identify conservation land and that operation of motorized vehicles is illegal. Three, bring the water booster station exterior into compliance with the original submitted design to better integrate this metal industrial building and into the residential neighborhood and the designated George Hill scenic road. As an alternative to three, the following may be considered. Link the Hawthorne Lane and Eagle Ridge water systems. This will lead to improved water quality by eliminating dead-end water mains, which are not normally allowed. Likely reduce the operating and replacement costs for all town residents who will now bear the costs for these previously association-maintained systems, and resolve a list of serious legal violations that continue to plague the water booster station. That ends my formal comments. I would like to make one other comment, which is that it was described that the planning board is the enforcement entity for compliance with the different conditions which were not followed for this particular development. We brought these matters to the attention of the planning board and more than one planning board chair, and were told that the planning board has no enforcement ability. We were told that it was only the code enforcement officer who could provide enforcement for non-compliance issues. I, two things. One is that there's confusion with respect to who has responsibility, and I hope that that can be clarified. And I recognize that when you have one party making the rules and somebody else enforcing them, there is a likelihood, a likely breakdown, and this has been alluded to before this evening.
You might want to clarify, the building commissioner is in the planning department.
Right, yeah, the building commissioner is in the planning department, so from an enforcement perspective, that's who is enforcing what the planning board does. They've worked in the planning department with the planning board, and so they're the ones who does the enforcement. It's not the Selectboard.
But we appoint them.
Yeah, I'm just answering his question.
I'm not suggesting that it's the Selectboard. There was some confusion or communication that seemed not to take place between those that had written the conditions and the party.
No, I understand, yeah, that I understand. And we are endeavoring to clarify all miscommunication, as you're aware. None of us here were here. And we know that, and to echo what Jason said earlier, we know that this has been a difficult situation for residents on Hawthorne Lane, the residents around Hawthorne Lane, everybody. We're just doing the best we can to get as much information out there, get the information. I really appreciated the letter that you and Emily had sent that you just read, and we're going to get all this information in. Um, and we're going to get all this information in, um, work with the planning board, work with council and report back on February 5th. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, it's.
Just want to say thank you for putting the proposal together, for the recommendations together. Thank you.
This is now the citizen's time.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, I'm Ralph Arda, forty-one Hawthorne Lane. I knew exactly what I was going to say until I heard Kate's up. Now I'm, I'm a bit befuddled.
Well, you got ten minutes.
Back in November, December, I actually reached out to the new planning director two or three times on this issue because I knew the, uh, the permit was about to expire. And he basically told me that it was a town administration issue. So I met with our town administrator, I was glad to see that we're going to have to take a leadership role in getting this resolved, but now it sounds like it's a planning board issue.
Well, no, it's an everybody issue now.
So I, I really thought, uh, we had a good, uh, Kate had a really interesting plan to resolve this and I was really going to ask for the support of select board and the planning board and the DPW to give her as much support and resource as she needed.
Can you wait till February 5th?
Now I'm confused.
Just come back on February 5th.
All right, so I'll, so that's why I wanted to, so I'll, I'll table those thoughts.
Okay.
The only thing I'll offer if you want solutions is I think that you're all new faces, you haven't been here through the four years of, uh, hell that we've been through. It's not a big deal to solve this. I'm think that the information you're getting is, uh, people have their own reasons for doing things. Uh, for example, in sometime around twenty or twenty-one, Haley and Ward, acting on the town of Lancaster, prepared the final punch list of Hawthorne Lane at forty-one thousand dollars. Okay, this is, this is not a lot of money. Okay, I'm sure inflation, but I'm saying we're not talking about a huge punch list, okay? That's from Haley and Ward. Uh, number two, if you read the subdivision approval, this was built to all the town's specifications because the town's expected to take over the road. This wasn't like some free approval, it's going to be a private road. You can read it for yourself, this is going to be a town road. Uh, and it's built to those types of specifications. So I think it's again, a pretty simple task once, you know, the work is completed. And with respect to the pump station, you know, I can understand the, the history there, but here are the facts and it's all in writing. If you don't have it, we can get it to you. You know, the building inspector ruled the pump station was legal. The Board of Appeals had a hearing and writ, and, and ruled that the pump station was legal. The Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, I don't, never heard of your organization, the DEP has a written letter to the town of Lancaster accepting the location and certification of the pump station and even implying that the pump, that the pump station be taken over by the town. So I think for some of us who've been involved for day one, most of these issues are fairly, you know, and they're not clean, but they're fairly minor. Um, so if anyone needs data, I mean.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'll come back on February 5th.
Thank you, please do. If you know where to go, Ralph, raise your hand.
Ralph, excuse me, Ralph Gifford, eight sixty-one George Hill Road. I am separated by a relatively small strip of open spaceland between my property and the Hawthorne Lane, so I'm in the neighborhood. And like others, I'd been told by members of the planning board that it is effectively the select board that has been responsible for the enforcement and I apologize if I'm confused, but it's been, come quite clear that there is confusion and it really needs to be resolved, especially as we get into bigger projects where enforcement's going to be very important. Uh, and if I can be helpful in any way on that, I would be happy to, to volunteer. As far as solutions, I don't know if there's any possibility of using a mechanism that we use on the, in the sewer commission. When a sewer pipe is installed on the street, we're allowed to charge a betterment for that property. And so if there were solutions that require their expenditure of money, I wonder if that same principle could be applied to the residences on Hawthorne Lane. They end up being improved by the situation and maybe a betterment could be assessed if there is some expenditure that's required to solve someone's problems. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? All right, seeing none. Um, I will just wrap up by saying thank you to Kate, thank you to the residents, particularly those who live on Hawthorne Lane or about Hawthorne Lane. Um, this, you're right in that there are simple solutions to the things that we're addressing, uh, the biggest pieces, doing what Kate has been able to do, which is digging through it all, determining how we got to where we are and how we can get out of it, um, how we're going to get through it. Um, and particularly how we can be prepared for May nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, um, should we need to be. So I am grateful for everybody participating now. I'm really excited to, for our February fifth meeting. It's going to be so much fun. Um, but more importantly, no, I'm thrilled. I, I love these, these meetings, these kind of meetings.
I, I will, the reason I didn't bring what I think might be a nice solution is because I dipped my toe into the legal water and I heard, well, I don't know if that's been done before and I said, well.
You didn't need to clarify that.
That's, that's twice now that, that I will propose that, but that, that would be the hope.
I will just say, let's end this component of our agenda from a place of gratitude for everybody involved and our dedication and commitment to not just solving this problem, but to finding long-term solutions to make sure that we don't put residents or the town in a similar position in the future. So, uh, with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, as there's a massive flourish of people trying to leave the room probably, I'm assuming? No? Okay, all right. I see so many trying to get up. That's okay.
I don't know what meaning it is.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm amused at how words I say.
That's quite all right, no worries, no worries. Um, all right, next, uh, agenda item is town administrator report, starting with the best book to read every year, our budget binder.
Which is shorter than last year.
Indeed it is.
Due to some consolidation, so for Mr. Allison's sake, who doesn't care for paper, saved a few reams.
Oh, isn't that kind?
Um, so this is a, this is a draft, one hundred percent a draft. And what it is, is, um, as we are today, it is an eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollar decrease in municipal spending.
Sorry to do that.
I know, I was just going to say the same thing. Say that one more time.
Eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollar decrease. So if there was any concern about needing the override of one point two, we, we got there by the skin of our teeth. That is in municipal expenses. Our goal this year was to do, um, non-personnel municipal expenses at level funded. I'm happy to report this is both for personnel and expenses. So it is a reduction of eighty-nine hundred and a reduction of three additional FTEs, um, due to consolidation, further consolidation of, um, of efforts. Um, it includes an addition, uh, of re-edition of the police lieutenant that had been vacant for a number of years now, an additional full-time firefighter as we enter phase, this will be year three of an eight-year phase to try to get, uh, more full-time and phase out on call. Um, it includes an archivist, um, and somebody who is a professor, professional museum curator, um, for the library. And it includes, um, someone, uh, on a small laborer scale, uh, for facilities, DPW type of thing, for, um, for grounds. Um, the schools, uh, Minuteman came in under last years, you can go through all of that. Um, the Nishoba was up, um, but, uh, they were up somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred and fifty thousand. We were able to, uh, work that in, again, this is a draft for an increase of four hundred thirty-four, six seventy-eight. Um, so when you take all of that in totality with our current tax rate, um, it is an addition of forty-five cents.
For your average house.
For your average house, um, which is as darn close to an underwrite as we could possibly get.
We'll lose it on ten cents for every hundred thousand dollar, but valuation roughly on there, right, on your home?
Ten thousand for every hundred, uh, ten cents for every hundred thousand budgeted.
Budgeted.
Right. So it's about forty-five cents for an average home that's about four hundred and seventy thousand, give or take. So, uh, some people may be up above a dollar, other people may be lower than forty-five cents, but, um, we, we worked really, really hard on this as a team. I mean, you've seen all of these, uh, wacky circles and things that are everywhere. Um, every single department's budget, um, ties back to goals and objectives that are in the overall goals and objectives. We have, um, themes of strategic planning, education, increasing efficiency and meeting needs. There are goals and objectives in here, both for staff, um, resilience and maintaining and attracting. There's things in here for, um, health and human services. There's things in here for keeping people in their homes, public safety, et cetera. So it's, you know, the meat and potatoes of this is about a hundred and twelve pages. Um, so it not, it's not exactly an easy read, um, but I hope that, uh, everybody finds it useful. And I will say it's not just a regurgitation of last year. We did what's called zero-based budgeting. Um, and so if you go through, uh, not just my, um, my initial letter here, but if you, if you go through the governmental structure and operational overview, there's a section two as budget drivers and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of ten pages of how we got to decide what is necessary. And essentially we took everybody's budget and zeroed everything out and then started with what is absolutely necessary, what is, what is needed in order to increase your performance and what is something that you would like to have, but not necessary in order to meet your goals and objectives and went from there. The same is true with the capital plan, which I think starts on page ninety-nine, if I'm remembering.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one. Well, ninety-one is the precursor to that, yep. And then, so for there you have, um, our inventory, our asset inventory and depreciation schedule, a capital improvement overlay, and then on page ninety-nine is the town's, uh, FY twenty-five.
Approved projects.
Approved projects and our recommendation. Um, in urgent to maintain, um, is nine hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred, um, so a little under a million. And, um, I was asking for three hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred, um, for general fund revenues, which we, um, would be able to take out of our free cash, which has yet to be certified, but, um, hoping to certify somewhere in the neighborhood of two million or so, um, combined with the stabilization account. So the finance committee and the select board are meeting on the twenty-ninth and you can go through.
Yes, we are.
All of that there and make edits and changes and we'll come back with a, another draft. But I, we're at a much better place this January twenty-second than we were last January twenty-second.
So I want to start again from a place of gratitude and celebration. This is, um, the most transparent budget I think the town of Lancaster has ever done. Um, Kate and her team, all the department heads, Cheryl, everybody have done a fantastic job of listening to the townspeople and then building up a budget and, um, a, a private governing, um, document, uh, for us that meets our needs, that helps us continue to be innovative, but also, um, is responsive to the town's, uh, the residents' concerns. So I am incredibly grateful. I think if you have a chance to review this as a citizen, uh, as we get closer to town meeting, um, or hopefully you'll tune into our joint meeting with the finance committee on the twenty-ninth, um, if, I defy you to have a question that this book doesn't answer about how we got.
Not, now they're all going to.
I defy, but that's all right. I don't force them to read it. But it is, it is incredibly thoughtful because it does, as Kate laid out, it lays out not just numbers and what it goes to, but sort of the rationale and the sort of the governing thesis behind how we got to where we got to. Um, and that I think is what we can all relate to when we're doing our own budgets, whether it's a business or a home, um, it all starts with what we're trying to accomplish and how we got there is fantastic. So I am grateful for this.
And we will put it in draft form.
In draft form.
Online tomorrow in the FY twenty-five budget. And then when both committees meet, we will, uh, have a second one that's the final so you can compare and draft.
Fantastic. I have no questions for you now because I look forward to combing through this again and we'll bring any and all questions to the twenty-ninth.
Alex?
Alex, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't. I'm going to give you this lovely document, so I'm jealous of this, unless, do you have, um.
A bound version?
A bound version or should I just give? Oh, thank you.
There you go, neither.
Oh, I think you got yours early because of the packet.
I did, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, no, thank you very much for doing it. I think it's great it's going online. If people want to delve down, they can, they can do so, understanding it's a draft.
Yes.
Yeah, I've been through this, I've got some serious issues.
And you'll bring them up on the twenty-ninth?
Uh, we can't afford printing in color. And this binding is too nice.
Jason is joking, everybody, just to catch your attention.
Although I would like to see the paper budgets reduced.
He's not joking about the paper budget.
We actually did reduce the paper budget.
I know, I know.
Every time I go into Kate's office, I say, there's some more paper there, I bet that's could save six cents. Uh, no, I will reserve, uh, my comments until I hear from the two, uh, Scrooges in town, Dick Tressel and Roy Rezak. I'm sure they will give excellent feedback. They are the.
They're great stewards. They're great stewards of our finance.
No, uh, this is fantastic. I actually feel overwhelmed just holding it. I'm not used to seeing this level of detail in our town. Thank you again, Kate.
How's up? Human resources updates.
Um, so for human resources, uh, Kevin Bartlett, who, um, is our DPW superintendent, um, has accepted, uh, the superintendent's role in the town of Clinton and he has said that his last day is going to be February sixteenth. Um, he, uh, today, at today's staff meeting has said that they haven't, um, the DPW commissioners who are the appointing authority have not said, um, who, if any, are going to be the interim, but, uh, he knows that they have a meeting and will be discussed again. So I will make sure to forward that along when I, when I know, but Kevin, um, nicely did this budget and he just passed in the enterprise budget. So, um, we'll be going through that just to make sure and, uh, I think we're good there. So.
Awesome.
We will work with the commissioners on the other parts of it while they, while they get somebody else and.
Motion and commentary plan?
Yep, so we are in the final stages for the Collins group of, um, doing our class and comp. Um, they have looked at, um, all of our positions, uh, police and fire, uh, would likely be in their own, um, with the exception of the police chief and the police lieutenant and the fire chief and the fire, uh, captain and the administrative lieutenant, which is a full-time exempt position. Those would be on the managerial professional scale. So, um, I'm looking forward to having that likely, um, probably by the end of February, um, and in enough time to have something on the warrant and then to try to devise whatever it is that we need to do to make sure that our salaries are, um, I guess in line with the market. And that might take several years, we might be there. Um, so we'll have to look at the data. Obviously FY twenty-five is here, um, so we would be looking at, you know, things and keeping in mind that, uh, the majority of our workforce are union or represented by a contract. So, um, you know, there would be additional negotiations, et cetera, I need to go into that.
Fantastic. Any questions?
Do you expect, um, yeah, do you expect if there's any variances up or down, that will that affect this year's budget or will that be incorporated into next year's budget?
No, this year's budget is set. So I was just saying, we would do it starting in FY twenty-six. If for whatever reason, um, somebody's salary is found to be, I guess, too high, which I have not had any inclination of anyone, he's saying that to me. Um, that would be a red line situation. So the only thing is they wouldn't get, they wouldn't get the structure movement if they're already outside the scale, but nobody would have money taken away. But I can tell you, they haven't said anybody, uh, that's, that they've done through the class plan is, is under, although some people are close to market, which is good.
Okay. Uh, we have no licenses and permits today, so now, uh, before we go, communications, next, select board meeting will be Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty-four. We do have a joint meeting with the finance committee. I know, we're going to get to that, but I'm going to do the stuff that they can hear first.
Sorry.
The, um, we have a joint meeting with finance committee on the twenty-ninth in this room, is that correct or is it on Zoom? Kate, I'm talking at you. Or near you.
That is here.
In this room, uh, on the twenty-eighth at seven PM or six PM?
It's six PM.
Six PM, six PM.
So is there, is there an option?
Yes. Um, town offices will be closed on Monday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four and observance of President's Day, uh, and we have no miscellaneous correspondence or memoranda that I'm aware of.
So Steve?
Yes.
The nineteenth would normally be our next meeting, right?
Yes.
Do we want to?
No, it will be our next meeting, our next meeting will be.
No, I meant, I, I meant following the fourth, right?
Yeah, so February fifth, we can discuss when to schedule our next, our other February meeting. Yeah. All right, with that, there's a motion to go into executive session and someone of these two is supposed to get me.
I move to enter, uh, executive session, discussion regarding strategy with respect to litigation in the matters of Lancaster Historical Society pursuant to section one, twenty one A.
It's just twenty one.
Three, and not to reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, thank you.
Okay, we are in executive session.